Today's day is going to be the most memorable day of your life. I, Isha, welcome you all to this wonderful event named Professor Dr. Ali Irani's Coffee with Us. Okay, so I would request to everyone to please have round of applause for him. For this, I require that let me introduce the host of the ceremony, Mr. Ashish Shatru Sir. I would request everyone to please have a round of applause for him. I would also welcome Professor Dr. Ali Irani Sir. He is a renowned and honoured personality in the field of physiotherapy. His proficiency is highly sought after in the sports world. He is a physiotherapist for Indian cricket team from 1987-97. I would request everyone to please have a round of applause for him. Guys, sorry, I must be running shy, I don't think it's time to stop the class. But it's time to show our little children, really. Please have a round of applause. Thank you so much. I would hand over this mic to Mr. Ashish Shatru Sir, so please have a round of applause for him.
Thank you, thank you, Isha, thanks a lot. And it's a pleasure and a privilege to share the dais with such a distinguished personality, Dr. Ali Irani. I think we know him very well. Those who are for physiotherapy, they are always the vanguard of physiotherapy. And those who follow cricket or any other sport, they know him for this sport and the profession. Sir, a pleasure to have you there and I think we need a big round of applause for our guest today, Professor Dr. Ali Irani Sir. So, coffee with Ali Irani. We took this from something and we wanted to do something different for physiotherapy. We have been organizing seminars and sessions for all different fields. So for medical, our vice chancellor has started living legends of medicine. We have a deep of innovators and then those who are out of league, those are outliers, we have coffee with them. So it's a pleasure to have coffee with you and I think we have a wonderful session. All the audience are just waiting for you to tell about what you are, what you are, how your history, about your future plans and more so about your experiences in that. So, the first thing sir, if with your permission, if I can start. Ah, please, yeah, sure, sure.
Good evening everybody, thank you Ashish. I thought I'm having coffee with the people, but I think so your voice has, Dr. Isha is eating away or he will be part of it when he's talking.
You can, can we have a chair please? Sir, sir, are you? Are you?
I know it's a very long day.
It's a long.
Youngers have started long back and almost Jaipur it is. It was a surprise for me, first time coming to this, but it was full of surprises. Good campus, lovely campus, very rare to see, I have almost seen all the universities in India and abroad, but I really look forward to this zone having Rajasthan, having such a lovely campus. I have been to Jaipur, I have been to Chhokhul and then JNDU, one of the old universities in Ambalit, then Lovely University. So going to South now, most of the places that I've been, but a lovely campus, I hope. And always and look at the college, the number of beds of the hospital. So you should understand, if there are fourteen hundred beds, that means there are patients, right? We run physiotherapy colleges where there is no hospital. They just go to some nursing home, they have an OPD outside, this is how it is. But you are lucky enough, gave your love at this great hospital and with fourteen hundred beds and many specialities coming. I'm open to any of your questions, other than here is a long list of questions for me. Other than that, you all can, I think so write down any question, send it here, definitely, please, Ashish you read it and I will answer. I'm like a postcard, so don't worry. Sometime I don't know to name people, so I wouldn't be naming them, otherwise whatever it is, it will be answered, right? Thank you, I'm ready, sir.
Yeah, so welcome everybody for this session and we generally do living legends and we will do living legends with him as well. But this time, you know, we wanted to be a bit informal with him and with kind of his flowy personality, if I may so say, I thought this will be a better kind of introduction of him to you and to us and to all those who are witnessing this particular event. So, and I mean, knowing him a bit by the kind of folklore because, you know, every time, you know, the cricketing and volleyball and we, he remains in news page three kind of personality. So, I thought, you know, this is a better introduction to him. So, we thought of this informal sort of gathering where everybody is, I mean, initially we thought that we will have some things, you know, whatever you want to do on chips written and presented to him. But Dr. Irani said that no, it doesn't matter, whatever anybody asks, he is quite open to, you know, answer everything and anything under the sun and also the moon. So, so with this kind of, you know, go ahead from him, we thought we will just be a bit informal and also ask all those questions, I know you have a lot of questions in your mind and he is, I mean, just to say, he's a kind of role model to all of us. I mean, we doctors, physiotherapists and all those who are connected with medical fraternity, he is kind of role model to all of us. And I'm sure many of you would like to become like him. And so I think that is the thing that we are looking and he will relate to you a lot of anecdotes he has had. And request he should at least give some names because that will give, you know, the context to all that is happening. Those, I mean, where, you know, these things are, issues are not a issue at all, you can name them, but otherwise you can maintain confidentiality. So with this, I think, I request.
But sir, I think, Irani said, nothing is confidential, sir, everything is there. It isn't an open book, so taking names, not taking them, we'll understand, they lose, we'll bring us. So sir, the role model you are, the icon you are in the field of physiotherapy. My first question would be, what made you choose this profession? Why physiotherapy?
I wanted to be a pilot.
Pilot?
I said I was working in Nanavati Hospital canteen. When I was working there, opposite Nanavati is Bombay Flying Club. So most of the trainers used to come into the canteen, I should serve them. And I started asking them everything about the, about the defense, about flying and how I can, how I can become one. So they told me, don't worry, within eight months you will make you a pilot, six months you'll be student pilot, nine months you will be having your, so they went on explaining, Isha, I was very keen, I told my dad, can I be to be working towards being a pilot? And then I was in twelfth standard, two things happened. So as a twelfth standard science student in Bhavan's College in Mumbai, I used to captain the football team. So again, I have never played cricket, but I was the captain of football and landed up in cricket. So one, when I got injured, I went to Nanavati Hospital to the department, Dr. Arnold Doshi. Very senior, got message from his mom of that, huh? He is not my man, he said, hey, the problem is that you don't have a sports physiotherapist in India. So yours is a sports interview, so their role model was trick. Something I should be done. Two, it was a month of Ramzan and I read my Quran in English. So I was reading in English, because I didn't know anything. So there's a phrase, those who know and those who are reading it, I would say Surah Maayya, verse number thirty-two. It very clearly says, God says, if you heal one of my human being, you will heal my mankind. So that struck me very hard. So why should I not select a profession where I will be a healer? So I will go and heal and God has accepted, if you heal one of my humanity, I consider you heal my mankind. So night I discussed with my dad, I said, hey, now I'm applying and I'm going to F A for the entrance exams. So finally I got selected in Delhi, did two months in Ames. And after that, the ad came from Baroda, there were seven physiotherapy colleges in India. There was Mumbai, Naipur, Delhi, Vello, Chennai, Calcutta, Baroda. Baroda was the only one giving degree, rest all were diplomas. So I went to crack that exam in Baroda. And then the wall is the exam for two ways, you have to write and there were interviews. So they were more interested in the interview, how you express and what you do. And twenty seats, all the seven colleges had twenty, twenty seats. So you were only one forty seats for the whole country. So in Baroda, next morning I saw my name on the top, so immediately take the fees. And I said, now Baroda is going to be for the charity cause, so I prefer BP. But yes, as things went, by the time I was in second year of physiotherapy, people in Baroda knew me as Ali Physio. So maybe one, I was captain, I was captain in our very good college football team. Two, I was playing for Baroda district. Three, I thought of fighting an election which is called FR, factory represented. So imagine the one side, all the MBA student and as I said, twenty in each year, so with eighty-five students from physiotherapy, I wanted to fight a post for FR. Then God, I won that election, so became famous in the university, so lot of strikes of nineteen seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty. There were lot of strikes in Baroda and then Hanam, Anjolan was also there in that I was beating and we were successful. So from there, I came back, started Bombay Hospital. I was in Holinger Institute also for that SHUT program of postgraduate diploma and graduation. But I was thrown out of there within two months because anyhow, didn't like me, the people were there. So from there, I went to Bombay Hospital, started my research program. And then destiny took me from Bombay Hospital, I was supposed to be the chairman of Nanavati Hospital. So when I went to this house and he came, okay, next week for this, he asked me, okay, what, what are you, from where you belong, where you were born? So I told him that I was born in Nanavati Hospital, I was brought up in Nanavati Hospital, I have been working in Nanavati Hospital in your county. So he said, then what, then you are the main Bombay Hospital, so you should be captain of Nanavati Hospital. And within a month, within a month, now when I was in Bombay Hospital, my seven o'clock to nine o'clock, seven thirty to nine thirty slot was for sports. This was the big physiotherapy department, Dr. Ram, I've learned a lot from him, he is normal again. But I remember the last two months, every Saturday, Sunday, I used to fly to Odava because it was not very good yet, cancer and everything he uses. So just wanted to grasp whatever knowledge he had. So he said it is, and there I was visiting in Odava, I learned a lot from him. And when I came out to Nanavati, it was hardly within fifteen days. So I was reading a lot of Hanuman Singh, who was the chairman of selection committee for cricket, he is from Rungarhpur. Then Pauli Omrikar, I was treating most of the sportsmen, athletes, football, because Bombay Hospital is close to all the grounds, to work around cricket ground, that's a recall. So I was treating that, so Hanuman Singh told me, you are at the wrong place. He said, Indian cricket, he needs you. So when I acquired, I believe fifty people had given applications, so from fifty-four was selected. From four-three, all of these were the doctor, Kandan from Chennai and Dr. Ladu from Delhi, Dr. Arnold Doshi from Mumbai and how to only say you. So I still thought, can I, no chance. So from four, they decided on two, so when they made two, two was Dr. Arnold Doshi and me. So, Ani Ramani said, we both can go, I will pay for both, but ICC rules said only one can go. So again, new interview for both and we both were friends. So I went and praised him, he is good, he has come from US, he does arthroscoping, he knows everything. I didn't know when he went in, he told Pauli Omrikar for the final interview, I am a surgeon. If you want something to happen on the ground, he should be going. That's how I came into Indian cricket. Being the first physio in any sports team of the country, a lot of responsibility was there. If you are successful, then you are part of all the sports. And if I was not successful, then I don't know whether they would ever want it. That seven physiotherapy college, it would have become eight also. So being on the ground, being there, everything changed, I think the destiny of physiotherapy is changing. Like many of the seniors tell me, we did physiotherapy, seeing you running on the ground. Many people say, I have Dr. Naggarajin, arthroscopy is from our hospital, Dr. Naggarajin. The best thing is, he said, I have treated him when he was an athlete, I have taken care of all his injuries. So he says, I went and did orthopedic surgery, seeing you, then I went and did arthroscopy, so I can do all the knee repairs. Then first when I entered, Tanavani came to meet me, he said, I'm joining Nanavati because of you. So in that, that's then.
Okay, so, great sir, nice, nice to know how you got in the Indian cricket team. But yes, maybe it's a loss for real, it's a gain for the Indian physiotherapies. And though you could not become a pilot, but you are flying higher than what the pilots fly. A round of applause for the physiotherapist of Indian cricket team. So my next question, you already answered that you have, you have been with Indian cricket for ten years. You have watched each player very closely, I think from Navas to Bhakula, you have worked with anybody of them. And you have been the, you have been with the Fab Four, which are Fabulous Four of the, the Tendulkar, Gamboli, Dravid and Lakshman. First thing, what do you think, what makes them different from others? It's not related to physiotherapy, but what makes these people different from others?
I think it's fire in your body. I'm always, the success of people have to be grounded, you know? If you know the story of a diamond, it's a charcoal, they remove it, it's like a pole. But enough grinding on it, even polishing on it becomes a diamond. And some of the diamonds are turned into solidar. So some become a solidar, but rest are diamond. So in cricket also, I've seen all of them have gone through tough time. The way they have got, were going for practice. I was talking to your living, I was talking to a gentleman, I was saying, I was seeing like one of our players cycling going for practice. And during practice, he had, he had his nose bleeding, so the coach could only say, go back home. So it is silent now from Shivali Park coming to Vandra with the nose bleeding. But these are the things which gives the fire, you know, cannot win the game, that makes them tough. But we had players, so you won't believe, yeah, I've seen players, if there are servants to put the pads on.
Is it, sir?
There are people, the people who will put the pads on, you will go like that, so the rouse comes. And when they have gone to the next, then they come back, they will do this, somebody will remove the, but I don't think so they're recently. So there should be a fire and I'm sure all of you, it's hard work. Please, the simplest example I can give you all. For your sake, so don't think what you will make, right? If I'm standing here, if I try to change my shadow, I can't catch it. But if I turn away, the shadow will follow me, right? So please, most of you all are thinking, what you will learn? Right? So money will follow you only if you are dedicated to your work. Mumbai Hospital, my salary was six hundred rupees a month, a month, my lowest pay. Right? And highest, we have got is one lakh seventy-five thousand rupees per one minute. So we are, we are not people to be employed. I think every physiotherapist within himself or herself is a consultant. When I was taking sixty rupees for private patients, sixty rupees for home visits. I knew a lady who was taking three thousand rupees. Sixty rupees was we were taking, she should charge three thousand to evaluate her patient, right? So these are the things that gives you the head. I said, I'll cross her target, right? Anyway, I don't do home visits, I don't go home, right? But the offer makes me feel very nice when they say, what do you want? आप दल के आते हमारा patient, देखो कितना चाहिए आप? So it feels nice when that is true, you know, what you can get. So please, remember this shadow, if you chase the shadow, it will keep going ahead. But if you turn back and dedicate your work, I never thought about what I will learn. Never bothered me also. I was, I only knew, hey, I am there to heal, so maybe if I heal, rest God has to do. And to have that fire in your belly, so more so this cricket club. Initially, when they come, they come from a place which is, you know, from villages, I can say, small town, they have not seen, right, where they have not seen a restroom toilet, the first thing I would teach them, should always sit on it. So they should go and sit over and then fall and first they should sit on it, right? But they have the fire in the belly and that's how they become, they work hard. I've seen a spinat practicing for four to five hours a day, one single stunt, single stunt and a coaching. The ball, then he, then he should hold, he should hit the coaching and the stunt, single stunt.
Single stunt?
And then he played for India, played a whole record at Chennai, if you remember, he is West Indies, sixteen rupees.
Sixteen?
It was a world record.
Marindra, right? Okay. You see, I think you might be knowing the names. Thank you, thank you, sir. So it's the fire in the belly which separates you from others, I think, great sir, great. And sir, in the initial days, if I talk of eight weeks, when we won the World Cup and we came back and after that, there was a revolution in cricket, as such, the whole cricket, dancing matches and everything after. But Indian cricket team was used to very, very bad in fielding, so they were called the arts, they were lazy enough to chase a ball, to take, make singles into doubles. So what changed means, I think your contribution has to be immense in that.
Our problem was, there was nothing like warming up. Even the car, those who are riding that two wheeler or four wheeler, when you start, if you raise it, that raises the warming up of the vehicle. So that system was not there. So when I joined, the first thing is there will be forty-five minutes of warming up. So warm up, if you warm up, more blood supply goes to your muscles and the tissues. And once, that will allow you to stretch more, so there was a warming up program, there was a stretching program. And then as you were playing test, I used to have a cool down program and cool down program was half the time of warming up. So if you are warming up for forty-five minutes, twenty minutes, I should allow them to cool down. Cool down was more on the floor, joking and we were saying mistakes of each other and then, you know, teasing them and others. There was a, you know, they can have a light weight. So that system coming in, then after I could conquer that, in eighty-eight, I could start pushing them for gym to do weight training, which is very important.
Nobody saw the gym.
It was rare, you see before eighty-seven people hitting sixes, very rare, we had Zari Durani who would hit six anytime. Others didn't have that strength, they didn't have the power to clear the rope, so we started strengthening the shoulder. So whenever they hate you, it will be outside.
Oh, that, that created the difference, I think. Now I think Indian cricket is, team is very good. So my next question is that, whom do you think is the fittest cricketer of Indian cricket and also of the world, the fittest?
No, I, I talk, talk about India, I think so Kabir was the fittest.
Totally, he was, he never missed a match, I think, you have a thought?
No, he is playing twice, they were training in Delhi. Our training program was eight o'clock, so six o'clock, he should trade with the hockey team and as soon as he learn, he should continue with us.
Okay.
So, you know?
So that's the fire that I have.
I thought you should just run, whenever, Haksavi, you should just go for a marathon, you should run, keep running, you have a car, you should follow him.
Okay.
I, I believe hockey would be a more stressless activity on terms than football.
He have never taken turf, he have always taken the, when hockey, they have to produce the turf, right, sir? I think so the exercise is also a topic, but he could finish with that and join us.
Okay. So he trained about, and about the world cricket, if you can name somebody whom you think is a person, everybody?
No, there are very big definitions.
Okay.
I feel intricate, the definition for a fast bowler, fitness will be different, a wicket keeper will be different, a fielder would be different. I, if you want to see Jockey Rose, one picture in CCI, I was thinking in Ramon Stadium, you find him like this and he had taken that catch.
That is fair?
Parallel to the cup, I don't know, but that was one of the World Cup matches. So I think, you know, in fielding, nobody can beat him as far as fitness is concerned. So fitness becomes, all a person who can stand for two hundred runs.
Nice.
So it's not that you, nobody can make you out, you get tired, most of the players, I think, they get tired and they want to come out, so they will out.
Yes, but there are players like Sehwag who both run much, they just hit scores and sixes and they cross three hundred runs and he has done it twice.
One of the senior cricketers, when he won, he was sleeping or better, he said, immediately, you can see a cricket for like a football, you can bang it anywhere. He said, no, that's not my problem. My problem is when I would take runs, by the time I have taken two runs, my opposition has taken three runs, the other side. So that embarrasses me. And he should stand at the slips, he said, if I miss the ball, he said, there are eight cameras showing me how fast I can run, so that embarrasses me. So he was not hitting the ball, but chasing the ball or taking the runs in between, he said, that's why I have a good time.
So in addition to cricket, sir, you are also physiotherapist, you have done it for many Bollywood celebrities, I think. And cricketers and Bollywood stars are revered equally in India. Can you share some anecdotes of cricketers, how do these superstars behave so that our body physiotherapists can just understand their psyche and they can work accordingly?
No, I.
What is the key one thing when you create a star, what should you keep in mind? So if somebody walks in an university and he needs a treatment?
They are abnormal.
They are abnormal, okay.
They cannot take any injury training and they will never play again. Same thing, stars and cricketers, any sports or, they are same ones, they become a celebrity, it makes a lot of difference to them. But I remember after we started all this in cricket, there were two young, up twenty stars and they had made a gym in the house and they used to highly come and see. Yeah, going to the gym and, so I still remember, I just met them during the Seeta party, both of them. The videos were very viral, vibrant on social media. And I was ignoring them, I was just standing, there's a famous politician, about the D D voters of Seeta party, which is very famous in Mumbai, Seeta, Jhokhun, Vandra. So, when they came, just to pass and suddenly they sang, so they came back and hugged me and all that. So you know, it, it's that, because I had them to become, start doing gym. Nobody had the knowledge, because none of our earlier stars were doing any of the stunts. There are people to run for them, so they were showing on the backside.
Okay.
But the new stars that you see, it's good for physiotherapy, they are more injured because they want to do their stunt. Right? So most of the injuries are they wanting to do the stunt, because they want when people are listening, we should feel nice, say, I had it, right? So we had, we had lost one of the stars on helicopter, in what, the same opposite Nanavati Hospital. So when you jump, you have to fall on the air deck or the tab boats. So he didn't know the exact timing, so by the time he left himself, the helicopter had shifted, so instead of the carton, he landed on the ground. When they were fixed, six months he was, five and a half months he was in Nanavati, it was a mental pressure. So now they want to do stunts, so fine, and then they started having that concept, the gym karna. And we have seen most of the stars, obvious stars will never be in half shirt to show their voices. But nowadays, the stars will wear sleeveless to show that they have been doing gym and all that. But I remember very well, one of the stars telling me, hey, the acting is from you.
Yeah, the person.
So your face has to be expressive to do the acting, not your body. So anyhow, maybe I'm close to them, they all come, I'm in the hospital, it's situated in such a place, Nanavati Hospital. So in blue area, where most of the stars say, so any injury they come and then one dead is the other one, like that. And then knowing this sport, so they feel the injuries are same, either they get injured in the gym, they get injured by digging high. Remember, one of the stars trying to jump from the fourth floor, but there was an airbag. But not knowing the pressure of the airbag, when he jumped on the airbag, he went back again, fourth floor and four, five times he went on banging. So he got a rib flash, so we were treating for almost a month, right? So there has to be technical people, because I was not the person to know how much air he should have in the airbag. I need to know when you were jumping, but after that, most of the stars, now also even TV stars, all the live shows that you will see, there are Baroda, Physiotherapist always there. So we have found a place in all the reality shows, in all the series and all the films that are happening in Bollywood. Even there is a fight scene, chasing, songs, right? So I remember one of the heroine had got ankle sprain while they were doing a song in my life. So from three AM, I started playing, I want to repeat the movie, the song, Thora, she is refusing to walk. So at around five AM, I went, just did TV and I said, continue. So suddenly I saw another Booshkuri movie, I saw a tight man of pokerity, so I said, Booshkuri picture, then Nari Bhai, what else I have? So they are there, remove and then put him on a, nine hundred. So they are there, remove, even put him on a, uh, ninety rupees, and you all know, because there was Bojshkuri movies. So after the scene was, they said, cut, 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 great scene. So I took my bag. I said, can I have a, as a name, I should go there, but I won't, I can't. So it, it is, they get injured, so they want you to continue. Right? So, and most of them, whether they are directors, producers, somehow they owe my vision hours thirty-five years, and I'm in Nadi Hospital. Born their product there, I don't know how many movies I'm going to be there, in the hospitals, and I don't, I can be working at one place. So I go early morning, seven o'clock, seven thirty, I go there, I'm there till late night, who am I supposed to make me comes there? So earlier, at one time, my proposal was from Oke Hospital, it was supposed to be seven thirty to eleven o'clock, eleven o'clock I was supposed to go to Hinduji Hospital, eleven to one, two to four, Lelapati, and four onwards to eight o'clock, Nadi. So one day, I just took a decision, I told my chairman, buy me off. I don't want to go to so many places. So he says, what do you want? I said, I will do the department the way I want. At an R B, there were six, seven patients, they were saying, today we see three hundred patients. Right? So, uh, we were going to start in ninety rupees. So our relationship with doctors improved during ninety rupees. So please, all the principal, the ortho, the, please send your final year students, your interns, through ninety rupees. Your relationship with the hospital and their doctor improved. So we do, we do ninety rupees, we do holiday rupees, we do salary rupees. And my, uh, students, especially the M T student, a lot of interns that come, I don't know whether your college will allow your students to come. I would prefer, if the students come, they should come for four months, five months, but come back to your university, and teach those who are not being able to come to Mumbai. So whatever techniques they have learned, they should give it back to your students, this is what I prefer. I think, I have given quotas, I give quotas to Gobati, I do it for Rajasthan, I do it for Jammu, because people who are far away, I want them to come and learn and go back to the city. So we are consulted. Each one can't do more than ten patients a day. Right? So even if you have five, you have a life. And if you have ten, then you are too good. Right? And we all, and you prove yourself. And people will tell, they will chase you. Initially, not, I suffered with four, five patients a day, today is three hundred, we stop at three hundred. It's not that we don't have much more patients, we don't give appointment after three hundred. Right? And working, so we are twenty-four seven. Like, more than hundred and ten physical therapists working in a department, it's huge. And our connection with all the surgeons, you talk about cardiac surgeon, ortho surgeon, joint replacement, they come, they discuss what they want. We follow their, you know, whatever way they want their vision to be treated, and twenty-four seven. There won't be a complaint, your physios didn't come to treat, they will be there, including all the sports team in Mumbai. Wherever there is sports event happening, they tell us, somebody is there. So we have everything in sports also, so people, you have to skill yourself.
Yes, very good, sir. And the key word here, students, buy me off. If you reach at that level, skill yourself till you can say these three words, buy me off. Hats off, bring out applause for Dr. Ravi Ramis, buy me off, nice word. And I think the future is bright for physiotherapy, because all these stars, as you have said, are doing action. They need a physiotherapist on the sets, they might have their own team also.
Some morning, I was saying, uh, India needs two lakh physical therapists. But our problem is eighty percent of the physical therapists are T A. So, uh, we give Dikri, but they go after the Dikra, they, they.
Dikra?
So they get, they forget Sengita.
Dikra is okay, but Dikri, Dikri, you need to practice it, otherwise, do laa, naa, ki, naa, se.
So, my, my number two, so our registered physical therapists are almost sixty thousand, but I feel the practice in physical therapists in India are twenty thousand. Because almost seven thousand are in USA, more than a thousand are in UK. We have more than six hundred, seven hundred in Australia, other than already in New Zealand, Singapore, Hong Kong, everywhere the physical therapist, all over the country. So we have lost almost, I could say, fifteen thousand physical therapists to our other countries, Euro countries. But, uh, so maybe twenty thousand are practicing in India, and we need two lakhs. So we are one ten.
Look at the two lakhs.
I don't fear, since when they say, there are two lakh physical therapists in India, I don't fear, everybody has one.
Everybody has one, but they have need to skill themselves, I think.
That's super specialty, many more specialties in the world.
So, uh, that was my next question. Do you have, uh, like, super specialization in physiotherapy? So somebody after doing the course, does he get a specialty, let us say, chest physiotherapy, post cabbage kind of thing? Or like orthopedic specialization or, you know, things like that?
So let me, I will just say, uh, initially, I'm talking about M T S, then coming to physical therapists. So everything was M T S. Believe me, the older M T S, uh, people also were dentists, they used to see the teeth outs. Everything, they go to the teeth outs. Then specialty came, divided into two, it became surgery and medicine. Then medicines have divided into pediatrician, neurology, you know, psychiatry, it went on. Surgeon became neurosurgeon, orthosurgeon. Orthosurgeon, some divided into knee specialist, hip specialist, spine specialist, soldier specialist, that's arthroscopic game. So with event of time, there was, I remember when, uh, M T S started, masters, D D started in physical therapy, it was general. So you have, you have V P D or you have M T D. Then we thought of M T D, because at that, by that time, I was in lot of committee of making syllabus. We decided we do two, right? So we went for orthopedic and neurology. We never knew how good we will be in cardio. So cardio came next, then committee take, based near a physician came, then sports medicine was started by J N D. Right? And I think so now, a lot of people, a lot, a lot of people are in pelvic throat. So many of our problems in this world has to do with pelvic throat. Started by one of our very senior therapists, who was in USM, he has written a book also. Right? So I'm sure that pelvic throat will become again a specialty. People will take that, but what we do, sorry, you know, in our M T program, I've taken a bigger umbrella. I don't call it rubber baby. My specialty, M T D, will be in N S K, muscular skeleton. So muscular skeleton, you can select your thesis, joint replacement, manipulation, mobilization, spine, uh, uh, joint thing. So only, the super specialty, they want only to need replacement, but many surgeons who need replacement, so you should understand. You have enough patient, every day, then once you can, uh, need cases done by the doctor, and he will keep referring to you. So in super specialty, maybe you will come, I said, the same thing, maybe, uh, we have seen at the post, until one of my staff has gone and started in Delhi, Mahima. She's, uh, written a book also on parenting. So she has enough patients, yes, and she doesn't take more than eight patients a day. So that would be forty-five minutes to all night, each patient. So she even teaches the woman how to become a mother. What are the precautions you have to take? When are you ready to be a mother? Then throughout the pregnancy, they teach you which exercises to be done, which muscles to be strengthened. So it itself has become a specialty more than self. So I think at, tomorrow, some airline will start, they will also keep a physio on the flight, so to keep the comfort of the patient.
Comfort is more important of this. Great, great, thank you, sir. Moving from physiotherapy to another facet of your personality, the Cafe Iranian Chai. Cafe Iranian Chai, which is a documentary, uh, made for Iranian chai, wala, to masta, and you have been a producer of the documentary. And in fact, that is a documentary which has won the highest number of awards ever in India. Give out applause for the documentary Cafe Iranian Chai. So how did you thought of producing it and what it is all about?
I said, my life was after school, coming back home, doing my homework, and four o'clock, I have to be working in the Nadi Hospital, the banking. So making chai in my chai computer radio, please come to Mumbai, there's another chai that I make, I make with my hand and I give it to my guests. Uh, it's quite famous. And I saw all the Iranian restaurants fading away. So Iranians, which came from Iran, at that time, there was no Pakistan, so it was Iran, border was India. And I pray, from Mumbai, was going straight up to Iran, a place called Zahedan. So many people who migrated and came to India, this was before the Second World War, before A R E difficulties. So when we came, they had nothing to know, so they were making. So my father also came at that time, so ninety years back, started a restaurant in Mumbai. One time, fourteen restaurants in Mumbai, and one of chai, the chai, the masta, or whatever they could make. So I thought that restaurants were fading out. So I said, why not document it? So I started shooting in Hyderabad, Pune, Mumbai, these three cities I have taken, full of Iranian restaurant. Now, from there also, believing fifty, I started almost six years back, fifty percent of them have closed down. So hardly any fifty percent of the restaurants are there. So my thing, but there was another interesting, you will find it later, there's another documentary I have made. It's called Sahar Badush, the gypsies.
Sahar Badush.
Yes, gypsies. So when the mobiles, the history, when the mobiles wanted to invade India, and they should come. So they didn't have enough army. So on the way, whenever they saw any gypsies, they should bring them to India, to show a big crowd. And they should loot India and go away. And Muhammad, he should every time come, get the gypsies, loot up to Mount Abu, the temples. And they should go back, so the gypsies are in India, three and a half lakh, they are called Sahar Badush, gypsies. Three and a half lakh in India, you'll find them somewhere near Patna, I identified them, I shot them, uh, Pune, Shivaji Nagar, Ghubli, uh, Chennai, Calcutta. There are the places we went and shot, so maybe that documentary will also come soon. I love keeping that, this will remain, because our next generation won't know that they were there. But I think, you see, they were brought for some other purpose, they have left here, they have made India as a country. So you will see blue eyes, most of them in this Bombay, Pune, they are sending helmet, they sell goggles and glasses, this is not in Bhopal also, and, and even in Bhopal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Even in Rajasthan, actually, so, yeah, even in Rajasthan, there are a lot of gypsies, and as a part of like, gypsies start from Romania. And they, yeah, they are from Romania to India, they are, however, they can scatter, they used to take the scarab and go all over the place. In India, in, in Rajasthan, actually, they are, they are called, uh, forget the name, but they're just right, and they see beautiful towns. I, I'm sure of the.
So evening, he said, they are in Bhopal, evening, he said, trading, he said, they have one horse, he will take four goats for that horse. Then he says, one goat, some ten chickens, they trade amongst each other, and next day, maybe the cattle will come back to them. So that time pass is trading of cattle amongst each other.
Yeah, Brahab, it's Rajesh Khanda.
I've, I've done a lot of, I've done some thirty-two hour of shooting with this, uh, Khanabad.
Khanabad.
And the best part was, I was asking one of them, what are your profession, like, so he says, picking pockets, tail biting, looting, they thought it's a profession.
Profession, okay, okay, very nice, very nice. Great job, great. And India's two famous artists, one is U and one is Toman, have you thought anytime I speak Bollywood, because you have all the connections?
Friend, we are very close, Toman. I have done, uh, I, I, Majid Banidi, did a movie with Ishan, a doctor called Beyond the Clouds.
Beyond the Clouds.
So I've done a role of the doctor who was an active patient. I get a lot of offer from my friends who are all within the scene, but I prefer something that the physical therapy, there was another movie made, Ancient. Uh, movies never ended, the role was the girl who makes an accident and requires only physical therapy. It was shot in our department, so almost fifteen years we were shooting, and throughout, uh, a lot of physical therapists have shown in that. So, uh, then I have done another, the movie is not released yet, it's an international movie, Salaam Mumbai. So a bigger role, I was a professor in there and then, uh, treating patients.
Oh, great, great. So sir has the exposure to Bollywood also, give out applause for the superstar, Dr. Ravi Ramis, sir, great, sir, great. And, uh, would like to demonstrate something, I think, with Chamakkar and Odhu.
Well, uh, many youngsters talk, uh, I want to only tell you about, okay, uh, when you are treating patient in India, the rule is like that, Chamakkar ka namaskar hote hai. So on the day one, if you can't show any disorder to your patient, don't expect your patient to tell you the next thing. So some of your techniques should be such that the results are immediate. So I thought one of the thing that I do, those who can't touch their toes, if you are standing and you can't touch their toes, two of you can come here. I won't touch you on also, and you will show an increase in your, uh, rate.
Just two volunteers who can't touch your toes, tum bhi nahi pakar sakte ho? Oh, yes, sir. Two volunteers, two rats, dozo can't touch your toes, aye, oh, the faculties can also come. Aye, sir.
Those who can come till here, I will see that they come.
From, from what's first, anybody wants to volunteer, please, aye. We will, we will have some, look, can't touch your toes, my dear, you can do it. Jao, remove it, chalo. Thank you, chaliye, aap chahiye, good, ho gaya, ho gaya, please move it over to.
Jo touch nahi kar sakte hai.
Jo touch nahi kar sakte hai, rupiya yaha a jaye, isme ko, aree pata hai beta, jota karte ho, jo touch nahi sakte hai. Can we call you principal?
Okay. Okay.
Where is the principle of physiotherapy?
This was, uh.
Ance, aye na, aye, sir, there are two people, I tell you, there are two people.
One is Dr. Ance and one is Ashish Marth.
We have no picture. Can you do that?
I cannot, I'm ill.
How much can go?
I'm not sure.
Good. So at least they know, I'll see that it increases. Right? Something? Good, okay. This was a research that I should spend ten to twelve minutes on each cricketer to release the hamstring. Before they could go, obviously, before they could go in that, it was a long process. Then I found a point of fascia, if I stimulated that, I should get faster results. Then finally, I came to, okay, why should I have this? You have to take a pen, ball pen, and keep kneading that place. Okay? So then they gave me the idea to make the player stand on a marble for two minutes. So you are going to time them for two minutes, I won't take more than two minutes. You all know how much, sir, can you move your shoe, you go and face them, face them, okay, go down. Fine.
Okay.
So you all know better. So I'm going to keep it exactly. Thank you. Right? Fine. Tip, boy, you will go, time him, please. So then, fine. Now, yeah, now, the initial paralysis things are painful, we are stimulating fascia. I don't know, I don't want to talk more about fascia, fascia is a network of our body, it's internal. Right? So I think, so, uh, one of the workshops yesterday, what I explained about that, so it's related to that. So any fascia you catch up in the body, if you can stimulate it, you get results. So this is for hamstring, I use it on all the back products. So if you release the hamstring, your vision will feel better. I, somebody is here, keeping a timer, thirty seconds, fine. So both a little second?
Five seconds.
Please, sir. Five seconds, yes. The keep talking. So, uh, you don't need to spend ten, twelve minutes on your patients. So before you are treating your patient, I just ask them to stand on the marble, and then after two minutes, you will see the results. So. One minute, so you guys, just one more minute, go. The next thing that I want to show you all is, more than eighty-five percent of the people have neck problem. How to test it? When you take the neck forward, chin back, it's no pain, but when you push it back, it's painful. Right? More than all ages, you have done the study twice in Mumbai, caught up people from outside the latest session also, and we found they have neck problem. And then the rookie goes to right and left, won't be same, depending on how much of mobile you use. Right? So the other patient, I say, it's bread and butter with jam for a physical therapist, is treating a neck problem. The patient gets addicted, they will keep coming to you, not every day, but off and on, they will get neck pain and they will come to you. Right? So again, what you do, maybe after this I have demonstrated, this technique is very important. If you are learning, start doing and doing it for your parents at home, right? They will be very happy with you. Right? They, they are feeling much better. Two minutes, so you leave this come out. Okay? Touch. Step out. Marble is yours. So I say in India, Shavat Garaka, namaskar hote hai. So I say in India, shavat garavat namaskar hote hai. What to do when, I always tell the story, a ship was not working, a ship. So a lot of engineers came and they did quotation and they could not repair it. They got a person who said, I am going to repair this and I am going to get, charge you ten thousand rupees. They said, we have spent lots of rupees and the ship didn't start. So he says, ten thousand, he says, done, he said, get me a hammer. So he banged the hammer three, four times and put it to the place and the ship started. So he said, hitting hammer you want ten thousand rupees, you have not done anything, one hundred rupees also. He said, see, my, hitting the hammer was hundred rupees only. Where to hit was nine thousand nine, the first time. So where to pick the marble is important, right? Otherwise, if you do this, no patient will go to pay you.
To kuch kia hai, right?
We do manual therapy, patients are not happy. So because our patient needs, we are, some of the patients are like that. Even if you give them diet therapy, they feel, jaga le, bhaanao, bhaanao, finally they will come and go first. You give them essential shots of therapy, bhaanao, they think, you know, they are paying money, jada le, chalo, you know. Right? So how much you pay, where to give the treatment, they say whatever. So if any questions are there, I come, or I want to show that neck demonstration also. So you all can start at this treating your parents at home.
So any neck demonstration, you need some volunteer?
I will be, I need to do the neck problem.
Yeah, please, please come, please come, 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 aye.
Uh, which is four, do you think is the center, the least injuries? And which is four? And which, which cabinet for our university?
Any other chair please, for sir, we need chair.
So the, 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 Bombay, don't allow anything to come without a swimming pool. Swimming is one of the best exercise. See, when you walk, only your body cells is working, no extremity. When you swim, it is double the calories you are burning, it's two and a half times more. So your upper arm is working, lower extremity is working and the spine is rotating. And you get corrected, I always give a lesson, you get up in the morning, you brush your bending forward. Then you are working, you are cooking, you are driving, you are riding, right? And then come and sit on the sofa at night to watch TV and then you come to sleep at night, either on your right side or left side. So this spine never does any extension, right? That's why Surya Namaskar was made. Like, we forgot, seven thousand years back, right? So you, so you, you have to unwind yourself. So I have made a shortcut for it. All of us has to be in this position, half in the morning, half in the evening, just to unwind. So when you are lying in this position, your thoracic gets the extension, right? And all the back problem, you will see, there is no extension in the thoracic. So they are overusing the number. So it's like lifting a bag with your hand, you can, but the same bag with a finger, you can't lift. Because all the load is on the finger, so please understand that that load has to be taken by thoracic also. So if your thoracic has gone infection, you are not doing any yoga. So that's why I think Surya Namaskar, seven thousand years back said. Get up early morning, get ready, go outside the house, face the sun, do your mantra until the first day of sun falls on you. Three thousand years back, Moses said, go to the Vedi wall, early morning, your head and wealth, I shall protect. The Lord gives us the richest. Two thousand years back, Jesus came, said the first mass is better than sitting in the church, the holding. And one thousand four hundred years back, Prophet Muhammad came and kept the morning asan, right? So Australia went after it. Given all the seven thousand years to now, there are two things common. Early morning, outside the house. And then the theory of Odhu came. Australia proved, one or twenty minutes before sunrise, the universe releases an ozone, which is very, very, very good for your health. Studies went further and it proved that there is no animal or bird in the world that doesn't get up one and a half. So they understood ozone better than human being, right? So I am not telling it for the Jaipur youngsters, Mumbai, all the youngsters come home after breathing the ozone.
So which ways they breathe ozone?
They breathe the ozone and then they come. So please understand what science says. My student have done a study, one thousand morning walkers, one thousand evening walkers. All the morning walkers were heavier than eating walkers because of the ozone. So don't say any religion, asking you to get up in the morning, you want to be, I have to get up at seven in the morning. Again, the best exercise sports, you want to swim it, I have never seen a swimmer. Otters Club, Kharj, none of the best swimmers of countries are from this two class. Never seen a patient, thirty-five days. So they are not, they are injured, you can't do anything, they get drowned, you can't do anything, so they won't come for visitor. So best sports today is correction, right? What we said, my, my, I think this year a student is doing a study, morning walker, when? So morning, before sunrise walker and after sunrise walker. So if you have a pet at home, cat or dog, leave the door open, except you one and a half, before sunrise, they will go out. Whatever reason you want to give, you give. If the bird is at your home, keep the window open, they feel the ozone, as soon as they feel the ozone, they will start to eat. So they understand ozone better than human beings. But if you want to get up, Surya Namaskar, see, people do Surya Namaskar, I get up at nine o'clock, I do Surya Namaskar. But it's, where, there is screen open, you have to feel the ozone. So please, no religion, no one, nobody needs you, don't get up morning, God doesn't need you, God doesn't want you, whatever you want to do, it's for your own health. You want to be everything, you do it. It's only showing with the brain, right? You're coming to neck, right?
Neck, yes, right, so we have three in time, three minutes. Sir, Salman Khan, huh? From scientists to women, Salman, very nice, taalea ba jayi, sir, please, bro.
In look back, for me, it's very important, it's SLR, I see, pre and after the treatment. For neck, rotation of the neck. So you are going to look on your right, just turn and see whom you can see. Can you see the guy with the camera, this one? No, fine, so you can't, you can see the speaker, then, fine. So you can see the speaker on the right side, can you see left? Yes, the side, you can see any of your, which one, one, two, three on your right? Fine. Fine, okay. So one thing was clear, it is right and at the center. So right, he could see the speaker, left, he could come here, so all, all of us are going to have that, right? Depending how we use our phone and how much we do and which side is lead, right? So it's, say now, the techniques, I am going to use the chin tab, right? I am going to use my thumb, so we will see what I do and we will see the range again. I'll, I'll move both sides, okay? So I am just going below the skull, occipital and thoracic, occipital joint, just push it back, you keep pushing. See, I am holding it, not allowing it, I want the transverse process. I am at C one, push it back, again push it, C two, come. I am at the spine's process, two. Push again. Push again. Push again. Push again, I am on the spine's process, push. Okay, now I am going to come on the transverse process, push. 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 Fine, okay. You are going to look on your right again. Left.
Great, sir, pura kuch karke durege aap. Can you see the beautiful heart setting in this hospital?
Fine, so hardly half a minute, right? Increase, almost in terms of spine, increase of range is decrease of pain. So whether the patient is acting or not, or fine, we'll ask him later, right? But you saw the increase in range, definitely the patient is feeling better. So you have, I always say, for physical therapy, anything, any joint injury you are picking, give ten minutes for the modality you want to use, please use some bhakti therapy. I call it bhakti therapy, diatremi, ultrasound, SSR, all this bhakti, like is used. So you have to give bhakti therapy, adult patient, kuch nahi kia, right? And ten minutes, use your hand on that and ten minutes make them to exercise, so in thirty, thirty minutes over. In neurological condition, it's a little more, forty-five minutes to one hour. So this is what you all are going to do, right? Now I am going to assist and push a little more to get him more rate. Okay, to your right. Chandra, from Hurd, it has come up to Chandra, so it's an increase in range. So definitely there is a decrease in pain, so you have to ask you when you came from the scale of zero to ten. Zero is no pain, ten is unbearable pain, what was your pain?
Maybe six, seven.
Okay, can you say now, feel what it is?
Um, non, easy.
Fine, so he doesn't have pain now. So tell me, if I would have given him fifty settings of diatremi, ultrasound, SSR, I wouldn't have got the age. So please use your hand on the patient. Unless you don't use your hand on the patient, you are not in the range. Four, look to your right. Okay, you can see anything there, standing. Two, four, two, so I am not going to go through that chin tab, that tab, okay, the self-chin tab. No, I won't. There. So you can, you don't need to do it, so what is the homework of the patient? Take a kerchief, towel or a dupatta, hold it there, keep your hand wherever it is and go to the task. Right? Keep pushing it, you are standing, you are finding muscle and you are mobilizing it. You can keep changing it, you can look up and do it, you can look down and do it. It changes the level of survival. There are others, next time when I come, at least this is the main thing, if you start doing it alone, they will be very happy. Okay, so in her case, I am not going to do chin tab, I'll stay, go and mobilize it. So she said, four was here, two was here. No, I don't want to change. See this, support the head on your chest, support it, there, and act like, right? You don't want anything, you don't, this, you don't, you don't, nothing, yeah, this, there, right? Then, man, click, okay. When sit there, you want to, I didn't know. Four.
It's enough or not?
Six. Four, six.
Four, two, six?
Okay, sit there, thank you.
Sir, Chamakkar, we can have the best of the world.
Please don't forget, this is the main exercise, those who have children and who make them. You know, earlier, the children is to lie down on the stomach and put the leg up and he should object. You have, don't have to do that, the play this is like camel, he should object, but today, that is the best, right? So this. Under your chest. Half in the morning, I play with my moment, I read my images in the morning, answer everybody in this, right? And night before I go to sleep, I read a book or something, okay? This, we are unwinding. This is one of the best exercises for the spine alignment of his mind, that over the neck, thoracic, and above. Okay, and then for the neck, what I showed you with the dupatta? For the back, you can form a fold, if you have lower back problem in SR, this, opposite side, okay? And you can come up. If you have a back problem.
Sir, we have one.
I have, I have two spine surgeons, I have two spine surgeons in Bombay. So before surgery, when they plan the surgery, the patient has come to me. They have said in the conferences, Kehadi takes away our patient from our throat. Right? They are ready for surgery, but always you will get fantastic result. Start extension, I remember myself in nineteen eighty-five, wanted any back problems, lived this line supine. Fracture, fifteen days, twenty days, now it is reverse. Day one, prone, pillow under the chest, bring them up, the disc goes back. I had a model of spine, I would have showed you all why I am doing extension, right? The disc goes back, right? And please, every back problem is not this. Majority of them are upslep or downslep. See where my wallet is? Never put a wallet behind you. You are sitting on something where you get a SI joint out of alignment. So please take upside down, so hopefully next time I come, I will pass the VC to get me a whole day. I become your morning starter, eight o'clock till six in the evening, I will talk. I will notice the body now. Immediately, see, the guy is standing there. How many chairs? The chair, you can see. Sitting on chair, oh, you're seeing this, but four people sitting there, right? All four, you can see, the last one is standing, you can, see, see, you can see him, raising the hand, no. Okay. Which one, how many can come? One, two, three, four, five, this one, first row, seven, first row. Six, first row six, and the guy standing there. So I don't think you, I should show you all the technique, again, just to remind you all, thumb, use your thumb, she pushes back, push your neck back. Push your head back, relax, push again, relax, push again, relax. I am on the transverse process, I am on the transverse process, I go on the spine's process now, push back, push it, push again, push again. And plant occipital joint.
Apkaradu, dekra?
Can you see? Yes, can you move, make him move, turn there. Any of the people sitting there, you can, okay, look at that, sir. How many can come? Can you see the guy raising it? Ten.
Ten, good.
We, we mobilize ourselves, I think, but I can do it in supine, there are many ways to mobilize, you do it in supine, you do it prone and sitting, so. I am just mobilizing. The other way to give fraction, you don't need to really handle the patient nowadays, okay? So just, uh, put your hands under the head. So from supination, I will do pronation, supination, pronation, supine, I am bringing a recidive. Right? Supination to pronation, that's fraction one. Two, how I mobilize? If I would have taken a height, if there was a proper measurement, after I peel this spine, there will be an increase of two centimeters in height. We, all of us lose it in our thoracic area. We all of us lose it in our thoracic area. And we'll be the king. Come here, they have not seen you. No, blah, 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 okay. Okay, so what I, okay. Look at anyone, sir, don't worry. My one hand goes below the scapula, above the scapula, and then the twist. Right?
You won't get the chance. Kadeh, okay, after this.
So.
You are not able to see.
Please listen, listen. I'm under the scapula. No, I'm under the scapula, above the scapula, and I push. See, she is feeling the clicks. Okay, so now, but do both side. Now look this side, look this side. Again, I'm under the scapula, above the scapula, and one push. And I reverse it. Few pushes at the thoracic, mid-thoracic, where the flexion happens, okay? And lower thoracic is going to be, I just twist her. Twist her. And now, face me, lie one side. So I'm going to use the number now, thoracic is over. Your one hand up. Keep your hand here. This leg goes here, this comes here. See, there's a rotation in the number. Other side. Right? Make this, your hand go. Right, the clicks? Come. How many? Ten.
Ten sixteen, from two to ten, and seven to sixteen.
Okay.
Amazing.
In sports, we, you don't get enough time. I won't get all this time, I run on the ground. I know the person is lazy, we need to mobilize. So I'll show a shortcut. Okay, you're going to hold your neck like this. Yeah. Very well. Leave it there, leave it there, right? Okay, now maybe. Ten.
Look at happiness on our face. Experience of, how does it feel? Are you not proud that physiotherapy joined you, huh? Nice job, Chavatkar, sir. Great, great. Thank you, Chavatkar.
Okay, please understand, my height would have increased by now. Right? I feel if all of us can go to the sports field like this after all this, or go for an exam like this. Because I released all those points, which is therefore stress. Right? I got the movement. Increase in range is decrease in pain. You don't have to cross question the patient. So if I see the range increase, I'm happy, the patient will be happy. You don't have to worry. Any questions on this? This is your friend, but I'll be jammed. Only do this, all can survive in life, only doing this. Eighty-five percent of Indians have a neck problem. Eighty-five percent of them have it. Start doing it at home to your parents, do it, do the same, and also do it amongst each other. You know, keep including the skill on this. Mobilization of thoracic, survival, number.
Come to eight o'clock, you will find lots of patients. Two questions. You have raised your hand, you may introduce yourself and you can ask the question. That can be a question, sir. Because Chavatkar, that's not how it is.
But I already know, I will do it. Please, I gave all the explanation. Skill yourself. At least once a year, go to a good conference to learn. And I hope your principal will continue to have this conference every year. And get all the experts from all over.
There is a lot of concept, you have to do it. You have to push it.
B C beta, permission, they love it.
Sir, next time I say, I can be straight, we have permission, full permission. You need to just come and tell us.
Yeah.
So, sir, this is Dr. Anandini Kushma. And my question is, sir, how can someone be so amazing? So we are looking forward for the answer.
I told you, I just know what is in my, actually a nice story. Bulbul sings very well, they say. Some people said, who Ganga ka pani pita hai. Some say, they need Shimla ka seetha hai. And some say, they need, who Saman me, Kashmir jata hai. So it's the weather of Kashmir, sunset, it is apple of Shimla and sunset, it is the Ganga's water that makes it. So when they ask the koil, he says, no, neither I go to Kashmir, neither I have apple from Shimla, neither I drink the water of Ganga. But whenever I sing, I sing it from my heart. So certain, certain topic, if I don't know. Certain topic that I don't know, I don't talk on. Like politics and zero, so I will never know which party. I treat everyone, all the parties I treat, and I'm not interested to know who is from which party. Because I treat them as a patient, I never bother. And when the staff come to me, I don't bother to take photograph with them or click or what, these patients, nothing. We had one of our staff was clipping shadow for his knee. And he is super, super intelligent. He saw the girl, there was a new guest, he wants to treat him. Didn't see anything, took all the treatment. So after forty minutes, diatremia, S S F, ultrasound, we went to the sport, everything. He, she asked, how are you feeling? He said, you treated my right knee, I have all my problem in left knee. And so he understood, he is like, so if you are going to show all that thing with them, just be normal. They love you when you are normal. They love when you are just going to treat them as a patient. So treat them as a patient, they love it.
Great, thank you, sir. I think being simple is the most difficult thing.
My, I feel, what I've learned, what I've learned is, uh. They say when a tree has a lot of fruits, it goes down food.
That's true, sir.
So I feel with time, thirty-five years that I've been practicing, I've only learned that. And then I'm not, I said, I'm not modern. Morning, they told me to come in suit and tie and all that. Otherwise, if they allow me, I will just come in burkuda and a t-shirt and speak at any conference. And so it's not that I need to, but you have to keep the decency decorum of innovation ministers coming, somebody coming. So to keep up with that, otherwise I am very simple. I need to tell me roads. I think yesterday they came to pick me from airport. They were talking. Ha, sure. So they were talking about big games of, I said, all that I can do, and I've eaten in all the five stars. Rastay, we could have a meeting. We wanted the road side to have a.
Thank you, sir. Sir, Chavatkar, famous Chavatkar. Last Chavatkar. You know, what is famous?
I have a patient coming from Jaipur in Mumbai. He, at least every two or three months, he gets the Chavatkar.
Oh, so, sir, now, we have you.
I think, you know, the lesson of the whole thing is, you have to work hard, you have to be skilled enough, and you know all that. But I think what I got, the message for me is, whatever you do, do, and starve once more, it is good. I think whatever he does.
Good, sir. Yes, very.
This day should be there, I have a heart condition, so I believe in that.
So from a heart condition, direct, yes, sir. Very nice, right, sir, sir.
Be nice to your patients, please. I have received a lot of complaints from parents, they call me. And, uh, please call them also. So when you're going home, if you give a call to your mom, I'm coming home, you need anything, they will feel nice. And once a time, a number of days, she makes tea for you and food for you. Sometime if you are at home, you also make a child for them. Right? You know. Now see, I see three thousand physios coming out every year, three thousand physios coming out every year. Hardly ten of them make name for themselves. When I meet all ten of them, I find out they are very, very close to them all. Right, so the blessing, I can all read it in a sentence, if there is heaven, it is under your mother's feet. So maybe, sir, you and I, uh, I'm talking about eighty-five, eighty-six, just started practicing. So I, I'm very close, I was, I lost my dad ten years back, I lost my mom three years back, I was very close to them. This is very important. Uh, flat next to my mom's flat was on sale. So that time, I'm talking about in eighties, the price was six lakh rupees. But the guy asked me, fourteen lakh rupees. So I asked him, lakh, check, it's not only. So he said, I just said fourteen, thinking you will reduce. I said, I don't need, thanks my parents, you tell me your price. And I'm saying that, I'm still saying that. I'm saying that flat, then I bought the next flat also, now doubled it up so that it is big. But I wanted to be close to them. Morning, I had to have, while going to the hospital, I had to meet my mom if I was in Mumbai. Or give a call if I was not in Mumbai. And night before sleeping, I have a number of time, I've told her that, seven o'clock, if I was not at home, seven thirty, I should get a call. Okay, where are you? I said, mom, I'm fifty years old. You're still asking me where I am? He said, no, I thought you have not come to meet me. So this is, this is how we're vision. Please call, at least a lot of mothers are complaining. Please, they spend a lot. I never want a parent to tell you, at least let your parent tell you, what have you spent on you? My dad had plantar fasciitis. I treated him with moxibish, it's a Chinese method. One treatment, if the patient cares already, it's just one sitting. Moxibish is through ginger, I get, through ginger. Hopefully, next time, I'll demonstrate here. So one, next morning, I was very scared to go near him. But the baby, he said, God, will your son work with you? I said, yes. He says, whatever I have spent on you, wasum. I said, what happened? He said, my baby. But please get them from your parents, and believe in the start in this technique that I showed you all for neck and back. Open up the neck, open up the deck, they will feel nice. And they should, you know, the healing hand comes with their blessing. Thank you.
I think we have a further session, just a small announcement. Anybody who, because you know, you're seeing Bollywood stars, anybody who wants, uh, doctor, maybe, you're going to use a photograph. Just to come here all the time more, and then they will give us.
No, no, I'm just at a fight at one o'clock. So I'm going to start at eleven o'clock, I don't mind giving a fight, because it doesn't matter to me. Because I feel I have to give my knowledge. Uh, I'm prepared with my physiotherapy in India, many people wanted to know. So I'll be speaking in the morning, I think nine thirty is fine.
So be on time?
Nine thirty, I'll tell you what, everything about physiotherapy as a profession. Going back to two thousand five hundred years back, the history of, we were before medicine. Physiotherapy was before medicine, I will prove that to you all. And I'll come down, what is the latest and what are the new specialties that will come. And from here, I'll still go to the airport, thanking them, lovely to see your campus.
We are looking forward to that, sir. I think.
We are talking now, we are talking dinner now.
Oh, so we started talking and we are talking, sir. We will have a question.
Thank you, I can only pray for you, may God give you a healing hand. That is the most important.
Okay, yes, sir. She wants to ask one question.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead, please ask all your questions now. Ask, yes, go ahead. Yeah, she got it, she got it.
Good evening, sir. Uh, my question is, how we balance, uh, theory paper and practical paper? Because we have to study lots of subjects.
Listen, I have never been to a library. I have never been. But when I was sitting in the class, my concentration was on the professor. I could grasp everything the professor said. If any question that was taken, now, sir, then my staff. Never ask a question which is not being taken. If the lecture has not been taken, don't ask that question. Your body, this mind that we are working is only eight percent. Ninety-two percent is still waking. So when you are in the class, you are playing with your mobile, you are trying to write, when you write, neither you write, neither you listen. So please, that system of writing notes has gone. Be alert, sit like that. And think you are recording, and your brain records. Right? So for me was, I've never been to a library, and always throughout my career in first three, either I was second, either I was third, or I was first. Certain subject, I was good. Right, anatomy, I was always first, nobody could, it was mainly, I was more into dissection, and I should have it. Right? But if somebody was there, physiology, maybe I was second. Right? So in all subject, if you are attentive, it's like today, some of them have grasped everything that was said. So studies is like that, there is nothing in practical, nothing in theory, whatever the subject is, don't buy heart. Many, many of the student think, give me by heart, that question, no, you should understand it. And write in your own words, as if I was the example, I love to read, I come to know. My, I take PhD exam, entrance exam for Bombay University, and master in finance, I take exam. You will believe I make the students sit in the library of the college. Without any supervisor. If I have to correct the paper, I know whether they are writing it from the book, or they are writing in their own words. So you are allowed to write master's finance exam, sitting in the library of your college. I don't mind. I close the door from outside, after three hours, I'll come and take the papers. I'm not interested to know, let them talk it. You come to know. So please, if you change the system of understanding, please, the brain, the brain regenerates. Right? Their brain resets from eleven to four. So if you say, instead of eleven, I sleep at twelve, and get up at nine in the morning, you have lost one hour. So by ten, and best eating is early, in six, seven, eight. Right? By ten, you should be in your bed. By eleven, you should fall asleep. And so when you come, your body has reset into well. So whether you get up at six, seven, eight, four o'clock. But don't cross the eleven. You cannot be awake after eleven. The resetting time goes, you're wasting. The regeneration, the national event is not happening. Right? So learn, get up early morning, whatever you are doing, WhatsApp at twelve o'clock, do it at four in the morning. Let everybody get up. You start setting that. So these are the simple things, let's learn from the animals, they do that. And they get up early morning, first thing again, when they get up, they go and have water. They will go to a river side, wherever there is water. Right? We don't. So get up in the morning, get one glass of water, two glass of water. And sleep early. Do at least some exercises, whatever, okay? I always tell student, some part you should walk. So don't go for train, don't go for buses everywhere, whatever you can walk, walk. Instead of taking a bus outside here, go walk to the gate until the bus, I'll sit from there. Get down there and walk it. Right, always take steps, don't take elevators. When you are taking steps, hopefully, next time I do a lecture, only on fitness, I talk, when you climb the steps, you are going to two thousand five hundred calories. When you are walking, I call it gossip walking. So I told the students from Mangalore, after they should have a dinner at seven o'clock. Right, and all of them complained, they are putting on weight. So I said, Chal, Chal, walk at this far. So after too much, when we saw all at increased weight. So I found out, suddenly asking them question, where are you going to walk? He said, from where I can get ice cream. So they burn four hundred, five hundred calories, they eat an ice cream, which is four hundred calories. So they don't burn, they will, they eat, so I said, no walking. So it's again, I always tell, if your parents give you two hundred rupees every morning, you are going to college, this is two hundred rupees. So if you are going to spend only fifty rupees, at the end of the month, you say something. So when you are eating, human beings were not made for four weeks. You have breakfast for home, come here, and somebody is going to candy, you go to the candy, and I have breakfast again with that person. Right, then you want lunch, then if you go home, you want something, again, dinner you want. Two meals. You make two meals. But see the number of meals that we take, and then fried. Right? Hopefully, but, so be alert in your class, grasp it. I have never, you will never find my notes. Never, and still I was talking. But be attentive in that class, see what the person is saying. Once I have a problem, it does not strike to come and talk on that topic. Right, and you want to write, so the faster you try to write, you miss something. So you have not recorded, you have not. Right, and you want to write, so the faster you try to write, you miss something, so you have not recorded, you have not written well. So both, you want to read, you are not, you don't say, don't know, they say, uh, housewife complained to the husband. Husband was a doctor, so he should write letters, that he was a doctor, so he said, please don't write long letters, the chemist refuses to read for me. So you want the chemist to read, right, so your notes are like that, you also can't read after you have written. Just when you are revising and you want to read, you are finding it, it's not making any sense to you. Good. Any questions? Any more questions? I should write a question, one more, so we will get the last question. Then we, if you find time tomorrow, we will have that, yes, last question. Uh, we, sir, my. We have this, we have this. After the patient, sometimes, what happened? A patient comes to me, and praises a physiotherapist. So I ask, is she treating you? No, somebody else is treating, but this was the person who has received that, can I help you? Right, finds out from the card, who was treating, what, please, your staff is busy, I'll call you, being dead nice, so that blessing of the patient goes to that staff. Right, so just be nice to all of them, fifty person is done if the way you behave with your, I have to give you an example, you must stand like this. It is my humble request, does it sound humble? No, sir. But if I say, it's my request, so the body language shows, the request is humble, so be nice to your patient. Believe me, it makes a lot of difference, if you have fifty person, it's mainly how you deal with your patient. You can't scream and shout, ah, let them argue, why you are here? I'm gulai, I'm yah khatar, naai khatar. No. You have to win hearts, whether it's your colleague, whether it's your teacher, whether it's your pupil, whether it's your classmate, college mate, university mate. You have to start to winning, to learn that. Less followers, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So this be the end of this session, and so thanks a lot, thank you sir. I think we can, we can listen to you for the whole night, it's been so interesting, we are in close, we hear, that was really how it is done. That's why you are be testing the town, and we heard that too, sir.
You should give us standing motion.
Now our request, our vice chancellor, to please present a moment to, uh, Dr. Adi Rani sir. It's our biggest, small video, thank you for giving our time, and interacting with so informative discussion, I think the objective of positive, Adi Rani has been.